...via remote video and teleconference pursuant to one MRSA, section four zero three B, two D, and section six of the Sanford City Council Rules of Procedure as amended and adopted August third, twenty twenty-one, reflecting recent recommendations of the U.S. CDC and adoption by the State of Maine CDC pertaining to the conduct of meetings indoors in the public space. Members of the public may join the meeting by phone by dialing one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine using meeting ID eight three seven seven six four nine two eight five one and password zero six eight four one four, or via computer at the link provided on the city's website. Members of the public may also submit comments via the City of Sanford website at www.sanfordmain.org under email, City Department, City Council. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, which, in the moment of silence, led this evening by Counselor Stackpole. If everyone else would please mute their computers, and we will turn this over to Counselor Stackpole.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you pause for a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Stackpole. Minutes twenty-two dash five eight dash zero one, order to approve the minutes from the regular City Council meeting held on Tuesday, February first, twenty twenty-one. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor Stackpole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Brink. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the roll, and I'll just, as a reminder, Counselor Martell was not present at that meeting. Counselor Brink?
Yes.
Counselor Martell?
Abstain.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. And I must have missed the roll call, so I apologize. Thank you. I don't know how I did that, it's right there on my list, not my eyes. Anyway, that is a motion to approve as presented. Do I need to go back and do the roll call, people? I will call the roll.
Probably should.
Counselor Brink?
Present.
Counselor Martell?
Abstain, I believe I missed that.
Nope, you're present, we're just doing the roll call that I skipped, my fault.
Oh, okay, present, thank you.
Counselor Hanselman?
Present.
Counselor Stackpole?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Present.
And I am Anne Marie Mistracchio, Mayor of City of Sanford. We're joined this evening by Steve Buck, City Manager, and Laura Sabrickets, the manager's executive assistants, and I apologize, I will try to keep myself on track. We will do twenty-two dash five nine dash zero one, order to approve the minutes from the executive session of the City Council held on Tuesday, February first, twenty twenty-two. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor Stackpole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Brink. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Counselor Brink?
Yes.
Counselor Martell?
I'll abstain, because I think I was not present at that meeting.
You were not, that's correct. Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes, that is five in favor with one abstention. Mayor's report, City Council Subcommittee reports, I don't think we have any Subcommittee reports that anybody told me that they had that I wasn't aware of, but I do have a short report this evening. For everyone's information, Counselor Hanselman will be appointed as the substitute for Counselor Brink at the first two Budget Committee meetings on March third and March tenth. Counselor Brink was unable to reschedule a prior commitment, but will review the meeting minutes and video to remain up to date with committee work, and will be back at the table for the March seventeenth Budget Committee meeting. Counselor Hanselman has served on the Budget Committee previously and is very familiar with the process. I've had a number of inquiries about the council vacancy created by the passing of Counselor John Tuttle. Out of respect for his family and his long service to the City of Sanford, I will wait to schedule this item for discussion by the council in March. Furthermore, it is my understanding that there will not be a special election to fill his seat in the Main House of Representatives. And I've attached to my report, for everyone's information, the Charter section two one two point one and two one two point three, that relates to the vacancies on the council, and then the Rules of Procedure, section forty-three, that details the procedures for filling a City Council vacancy, should there be a vacancy, and should the council determine that it is in the best interest of the city that the vacancy be filled. So I anticipate that this might be on the agenda for the second meeting in March, when Counselor Brink will be back in attendance. Trying to think, I think the only other thing that I had to share was a card that was received in City Hall from the family of John Tuttle. "To friends and colleagues at City of Sanford and Sanford City Council, thank you to all who expressed their sympathy in John's passing. A special thank you to the ones who honored John in person at his wake and funeral. I will truly miss him. Warmest regards, Anne." Just, I thought everybody, that that deserved to be shared in public. And I just would also like to say that I received a number of cards and comments from the average, they're just citizens who felt they needed to share with me as the mayor that how much they respected John and how much they'll miss him. And that's all I have this evening. Is there anybody else that has a report that they'd like to make that I didn't, wasn't aware of? Counselor Hanselman, go ahead.
Not an official Subcommittee, but if I could briefly report out, I'm friends with downtown.
Absolutely.
We meet after a break during the holidays, and our, be planning, excuse me, every two weeks moving forward for a while. Just wanted to give folks a heads up that there is a new initiative coming out through Friends of Downtown, which will be a Best of Stanford initiative, so I'm really excited about it, and we'll be sharing more information as that comes together. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hanselman. Anybody have anything else? Seeing no hands up, I will go to the City Managers' report.
Thank you, a couple of topics for this evening. First, I'd like to continue to present on the RACE Grant. City Administration coordinated with Public Works Director Matthew Hill, in partnership with the Maine Department of Transportation, we're working weekly now with Blue Jay Consulting on the fulfillment of a RACE Grant application for federal dollars in an amount likely to exceed now twenty million dollars. RACE Grant, which stands for Rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity, is a federal discretionary transportation grant program formerly known as the Tiger Grant, under the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. This act aids communities around the country to carry out projects with significant local and regional impact. U.S. Department of Transportation recently announced a sum of one point five billion has been allocated to this round of RACE Grant program, and issued the Notice of Funding Opportunity, or NOFO, on February fourth, with applications due by April fourteenth. So it's a very tight and compressed timeline. Administration is meeting with the Maine Department of Transportation weekly. We met this past Monday to provide the necessary background and supporting documentation to Blue Jay Consultants for the cooperative submission of the grant between the MDOT and the city. Project Scope attached incorporates numerous prior project partnership agreements between the Maine Department of Transportation and the city. We have asked for, and MDOT said that they would, they would do an omnibus agreement for us, taking a number of the WIN projects and the PPIs, the MPI's, and others, combine that into a single scope, get that under a single agreement, because once awarded these federal funds, you cannot go across multiple WIN numbers, it has to come under just the one. All of the projects that are being incorporated here are currently under engineering development and are being updated, those costs are being updated and are being viewed as, quote, shovel-ready for this round of the RACE Grant application. MDOT is providing the necessary funding for the consulting services to meet the rapid deadline for the application. Project Scope includes MDOT WIN-numbered projects of River Street, William Oscar Emery Drive, and Riverside Street as the promenade that we've talked about, Cottage to Winter Street, which is two oh two, Washington Street, School Street to Elm, Main Street from one oh nine, which is one oh nine, from Emery to Lebanon Street. Scope also includes the full reconstruction of Central Park, the construction of a park-and-ride adjacent to Cumberland Farms. Off Emery Street, five lit intersections will be included for the traffic signal upgrades that are currently being imposed, as well as the creation of a municipally-owned duct bank which will go below Main Street to serve the downtown district, which currently is mandated to have all utilities underground. Those conduit banks for both telecom and electric are aged and failing, and this would be a great way to replace that infrastructure. Found it very gratifying to be compiling the volumes of information, recognizing the city can competitively address the multiple areas required in the submission. If you look at the NOFO, it's extremely extensive, and I want to thank Matt Hill very much for his extraordinary efforts on this in compiling the information. I don't know if Google has quite enough space to store it all at this point in time. I'll continue to report out on the progress of the RACE Grant. Again, it's a very compressed timeline. Once it's further compiled, that will come to the City Council for review and your further authorization as we move that forward. Again, the twenty million dollars is extremely significant, both to the state and the municipality, as it will allow us to shift our limited resources to other areas of street improvements in our municipality, given this new level of federal funding. The next item, we did receive a response from Breeze Line, formerly Atlantic Broadband. I'll forward that over to the City Council. Did review that with legal counsel today. The city had cement a note, submitted a notice to Atlantic Broadband, again, which is now Breeze Line, of the lack of an uncoupled Tier One cable TV offering, as Breeze Line currently requires a customer to purchase Internet services to obtain the Tier One basic TV offering. City alleged that Breeze Line was in violation of section six twenty-three B seven of the FCC Communication Act. Breeze Line has now responded back stating in detail as to why they are not in violation, that they are now utilize the Internet protocol for the delivery of the basic tier multi-channel programming, and also stated that the franchise cannot regulate their method of delivery, i.e., cable versus Internet. Administration is working with legal counsel to outline the potential next steps and provide the summary to the council in the near term, and ask if any further actions are justified per the council's directive. Other elements today, Lee Burnett, the city's part-time technical writer, has submitted his resignation from the city's employment. It's not given its effective date, but we believe that it will be by the end of March of this year. Like to thank Lee for his years of service with the city, and for the numerous, emphasis numerous, grants that he has captured over the years, totaling millions of dollars. Also received word today that James Nyman, the Executive Director of the Sanford Regional Economic Growth Council, has submitted his letter of retirement to the Board of Directors, as well as to myself. And as City Manager, I'm currently the Chair of the Growth Council. Jim's retirement will be effective April twenty-second of this year. Like to recognize the work completed by Jim related to the filling of our industrial park, market rate housing, Sanford Net Fiber, construction of the high school, and a host of other development projects over the past eleven years of his service. Jim has invaluable connections with the state and federal offices as well. City Administration will aid the Growth Council in the search for a new Executive Director at the current juncture of a newly formed Board of Directors, impending redevelopment of office space and the structure of the organization. Be an incredible opportunity for a well-qualified person, as the city has proven itself to be both vibrant, and its momentum is continuing forward. Last of the big news on the hires is that Peter Smith, our former Public Works Foreman, has been hired back. He is now functioning as our Assistant Public Works Director under our reorganization of the department, administration, and to increase the efficiencies and focus during the time of elevated construction and maintenance activities. City formerly had the position of Assistant Public Works Director, but had lost that position in lieu of the Environmental Services Director and other staff changes in the past. Director Smith returns to the city, returned to the city on January twenty-ninth, aid in the winter storm responses, and is assisting with managing a reduced workforce and contracted services for this winter season. I'd like to welcome Peter back to the fold. He is a trusted employee for many years with the city, and it's great to have him back. Last page of the document that I'll send out to the council, this shows the scope of the RACE Grant. All of these streets outlined in color here are part of that scope. So again, as I referenced, Cottage Street down to the intersection of Winter, a new light there. You have all of River Street coming in here, William Oscar Emery to Riverside Ave, Washington Main Street from the intersection of Lebanon Street with new lighting there, the municipal conduit bank underneath Main Street in this area between Washington and Lebanon Street will be duckeded, reconstruction of Central Park format, reconstruction of School Street as has been proposed, and then further reconstruction of Main Street down to the intersection with Emerson Street, as well as the construction of a new park-and-ride adjacent to the Cumberland Farms. This previously was looked at as eighteen point five million dollars, but given the elevated cost of construction, it will be upwards of twenty million dollars. The RACE Grant is capped at twenty-five million dollars, so if water and sewer are able to come into the fold in this, the short time period that we have, we may be able to maximize at the full twenty-five million. All I have for you for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions of the City Manager about anything in that report? Okay, I don't see any questions. Communications and presentations, twenty-two dash two nine dash zero one, presentation by the City Manager on the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three City of Sanford Municipal Operating Budget as it will be presented to the Budget Committee. Does you, Steve, correct?
Yes, it is, thank you. So to keep the presentation as brief and high-level as I can this evening, in the packet was a presentation for comparison. This is the tax rate projection sheet, and it shows the year-over-year changes, and I have a narrative that I will share with you here this evening, and I'll forward that on as well. So knowing that you have this in your packet, the end result is a two point two one percent change in net taxation. I feel that's high at this point, and will greatly be mitigated further, as I find that there are further opportunities on revenue that has not yet been recognized yet, one of which is likely several hundred thousand dollars in increased municipal revenue sharing, but the state's new projection numbers are not available until mid-March, so we won't know that until we get further into the budget process. Let me bring forward a narrative for this evening. Starting out, as we always do, we've made no change to the city's valuation. Last year is at one million eight hundred ninety-nine thousand, one billion eight hundred ninety-nine million seven hundred thirty-eight thousand. That was about a two-hundred-million-dollar increase year-over-year. I alone am estimating likely a hundred and fifty-million-plus this year, and even that number may be low, but leaving it alone for the analysis for this evening. County tax is at seven hundred ninety-nine thousand, we've left that number in, we've been able to do this for quite a number of years now. Because of our strong utilization of tax increment financing, as well as our rate of growth in valuation, is smaller than the surrounding coastal communities. We generally see when the county has a two-to-three percent increase in their net call for taxation, we net out on that and see virtually no change. Getting to the expense side of the municipal budget, you can see for this year, it's at twenty-nine million two hundred and six thousand dollars. That's an increase of one million six hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, or five-point-nine-six percent. This is a greatly reduced numbers from what we started. When I started with the raw budget that was submitted to us by the department managers, who I want to commend for doing an exceptionally strong job this year in putting forward necessary budgetary requests in their budgets for this year, for which Ronnie Champlin, our Finance Director, and I sit with them over a one-month period, go zero-based budget, line by line, looking at unit cost, justification for everything that was in there. We started with an expense increase of over two million dollars, or six-point-seven-three percent. You see the reduction that we have here at that point. The capital improvement program was up by three-point-five million dollars, nearly doubling. It was an eighty-eight percent increase, we've been able to mitigate that, you'll see that here later. Revenue, overall revenue was only up by twenty-nine thousand dollars, or point oh five percent. You'll see that we have greatly captured more revenue than that. So we started with a net call of taxation, an increase of five, just under five-point-seven million dollars, or sixteen-point-seven-five percent. So the manager's version of the budget that's being presented here this evening has that down to two-point-two percent, and I believe there's great potential there, both on the expense side as well as the revenue side, to further mitigate that. Looking at the expense categories, what comprises that one-point-six-million-dollar increase, there's significant changes this year. Employee insurances and benefits is increased by three hundred and eight thousand dollars, that's a normal amount for us, that's not extraordinary. What is extraordinary is you'll see a one-million-eight-thousand-dollar change in full-time salaries, and I'll show you where those changes are, that is an extraordinary piece for us in there. Overtime salaries, it's been reduced by forty-six thousand two hundred and sixty-nine, and I'll show you where those changes have come in place. Part-time salaries are up by fifty-two thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Much of that is the restoration of the full recreational programs coming out of COVID for this summer, and actual expansion of the programs with our new director. So much of that increase in part-time salaries is there on the recreation side, majority of which has offsetting revenue. Non-contract services is an increase of seventy-five thousand one hundred and thirty-four. Supplies are up by a hundred and four thousand and seventy dollars. That's one of the more impactful line items this year, is supply cost for everything, from paper and other supplies are up significantly, for which we're attributing to the supply chain elements. Equipment cost is up by twenty-two thousand eighty-one, building maintenance is up by nearly thirty thousand dollars. Utilities is only up by five thousand six hundred and eighty-six, that's a rather, it's a rather perplexing number. All of our utility estimates, the unit costs are up, we've seen decreases in overall utilization on many of these utilities, except for electricity, and by doing a close gleaming through historical, as well as changes in our fleet and other aspects, you see the increase has been mitigated down to five thousand six hundred and eighty-six dollars. Electricity is up by ten thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars, you can thank that to the change in petroleum prices, which is reflective of our base cost on electricity. Gasoline and diesel is down by forty thousand four hundred and thirty-four dollars, and I have a listing here as to where those changes are, where those reductions came from. Vehicle maintenance is up by twenty-two thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Much of that increase, though, was changing the line items where they were in various departments, moving them into vehicle maintenance and out of other areas. So it's not, it does not represent a significant increase in the vehicle maintenance cost, only the movement of lines. Legal services is an additional call-out of twenty-five thousand dollars this year, and the and-all-other category is simply sixty-five thousand and forty-eight dollars overall budget. Getting into further explanation, employee main purse is up by ninety-seven thousand and sixteen dollars. That is up, not due to rate changes, but changes to the significant increase in employee base that's in here this year. Health insurance plan, no change to the design in the plan, we're still at seventy percent max out-of-pocket. There was a five percent increase on the plan overall, we're able to capture a hundred and fifty-thousand-dollar savings again this year, with a propensity to perhaps capture even more of that as further mitigation. So we were able to get that down to a four-and-a-half percent, or a hundred and forty-thousand-dollar increase overall. Social Security is up six-point-three percent, or sixty-eight thousand six hundred and ninety dollars. I'll go into all the labor agreements, the percentage increases for each of the CBAs that have been negotiated are categorized for you here. Part-time salaries, Parks reduced the part-time salaries by ten thousand eight hundred dollars to support a new split position. So we have a full-time position coming in that would be utilized for part of the year under the Parks Department, and part of the year under Public Works, to greatly aid in the winter maintenance aspects, down on staff for three years now. Ninety-four hundred dollar increase in voter registration for changes to the minimum wage, twelve dollars and fifteen cents to twelve seventy-five per hour. And we have a part-time HR generalist in at twenty-eight thousand sixty-seven dollars. That position was actually hired in this fiscal year, and we're covering that from outages, but it's been put into the budget to continue that part-time position going forward. Overtime salaries, overtime is down citywide by forty-six thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars. The SRCC, because under the Opera Funds, there's been the allocation of two, the restoration of two positions in there to get that staffing to twenty-two, because of that full-time staffing, we're able to eliminate a hundred and thirty-two thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars out of overtime that is typically incurred because of the lack of staffing in there, typically has fallen to sixteen and/or fewer. Non-contract services, there's a twenty-five thousand dollar placeholder in there for marketing that's coming out of the TIF districts, as well as the funding of the communications coordinator position. Pressure city clerk, increase of twelve thousand six hundred dollars due to increased cost in title search, that has gone up dramatically. As well as fulfilling the general codes and the continued codification, keeping that abreast of all of the changes that have been made over the last year. Fire Department has an increase of twenty-one thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars for pre-employment physicals and pulmonary testing. This is effort to further reduce our workers' compensation for the presumptive cases going forward in the future that have been very costly to the city through year-to-date. Supplies and ammo, the police department's supply line is up by seventy-four thousand three hundred and ninety-three dollars, which is ammunition, emergency PPE, and supplies for the social worker which will become an employee of the city under this current budget that is being proposed. And the airport supply has increased by sixteen thousand nine hundred and fifty. This is the year that they're going to do the significant painting signs, flags, and they had to purchase crack ceiling materials, we've been working for several years now on prior inventories of crack ceiling materials that was obtained from the state, and they have to purchase those this year. Also at the airport, there's a seven thousand dollar request for a new blower for the runways, pulled by their pre-existing tractor. The current nineteen ninety unit is functional. Recreation has sixty-nine hundred and seventy-one dollars for new desks and supplies in anticipation to moving into the memorial gym. And the DPW has an additional generator of five thousand two hundred and forty dollars, chainsaws, power booms, and plate compactors. Looking at other major elements, vehicle maintenance, the police department moved eighteen thousand five hundred dollars from vehicle operations to the vehicle maintenance line, that's my earlier references to some movements. Environmental Services has a seven thousand dollar increase for repairs, as they only have one trailer for municipal solid waste action, so we need to fill it back into inventory. Utilities, we talked about that earlier. Gasoline and diesel, we were able to reduce the police department's gasoline line by thirty thousand dollars this year. We've been reviewing that and looking at that on the historical basis for a number of years, and continue to bring that down to a necessary level. Legal services, there's an additional twenty-five thousand dollars in there for this year. We're seeking to fund a wage classification study for the non- Uh, we're seeking to, uh, fund a wage and classification study for the non-union employees. Uh, this year, we find that we have done extensive work on all of the collective bargaining agreements, uh, doing the comparisons, um, looking at, uh, twenty-five-year historical basis for, uh, comparables out there to stay wage competitive. Uh, we have not done that, uh, for the, uh, ten-plus years that I've been here as far as the, the non-union employees. And starting to feel the stress as far as being wage competitive out there in the marketplace. Also under electricity, uh, we have continued savings from the LED streetlight conversion. Uh, and ten thousand dollars this year has been included for repairs and replacement, uh, on, uh, the eight hundred and twenty-six LED service lights that we have out there. I would note here quickly that of the eight hundred and twenty-six, um, LED streetlights that we have out there, we have an electric cost of, of just over four thousand dollars on those eight hundred and twenty-six fixtures. Of the, um, remaining, I believe eighty-seven, um, high-pressure sodium fixtures that we have left that the city owns and does not lease any long, longer. We have a forty-two hundred dollar electric bill on those remaining eighty-seven. So of the elements we're looking at this year is the mean of those remaining eighty-seven. Uh, existing, uh, fiscal twenty-three positions that were not funded, um, parks, part-time seasonal, because we've shifted that to a shared position. Uh, twenty-three positions that were re- uh, requested but not funded included a planning tech in the planning department. A, uh, the conversion of the part-time HR generalist to a full-time, uh, that was not funded. Uh, two firefighter paramedics, uh, was not funded, uh, but you can see down below here, uh, just below. I'm calling out for an assistant fire chief to be hired in there focused on the ambulatory side of the operations, which, which comprises uh, greater than eighty percent of the sheer run volume within the department. And also to, uh, go back to taking over many of the training aspects as that training officer was lost a number of years ago. There's a request in Public Works for civil engineer one, an additional civil engineer. Uh, the need is there, but we do not find the, the ability to fund that. And the sign shop and traffic foreman was in the, the budget as a request. We've been able to forego that, uh, especially with the hiring of, of Peter Smith back as the assistant director. Will continue to take care of the sign needs, uh, absent, uh, bringing in a specific position. New positions that are in this year's budget, uh, two dispatchers at a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars that will be funded by opera funds. Part of the council's acceptance on that. Again, I've made the recommendation of assistant fire chief in lieu of the two firefighter paramedics. The, there should be, uh, lively discussion, discourse and debate on that. We have, um, um, Director of Operations in here at eighty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars, uh, to include the insurance, uh, and, uh, operations. One, uh, that, that is the deputy director in the dispatch center. Uh, we have, uh, moved one of the prior, uh, dispatchers into that deputy director position and are doing training, training in there for, uh, future management and of operations. That person also has become our training officer. So we finally have been able to, uh, solidify, uh, concerted training programs, standardize that and have that under the purview of a single, uh, person. We have one, uh, police officer position in there, uh, at a cost, a net cost of thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight. That is the grant match for the cops grant that the city was awarded. We have the social worker position in there at a hundred and ten thousand dollars with the offsetting revenue from the opera funds. We have the new DPW and parks split EO one position, uh, so twenty-two weeks in park and the remaining, uh, thirty weeks in the public works, uh, department. And we have the assistant, uh, director to public works, uh, that is a twenty thousand dollar net change to the prior foreman. Uh, position overall cost, uh, and in lieu of, we're eliminating an EO four out of the overall organizational structure to, to, uh, bring the savings back. And we have an additional seasonal labor at eleven thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars from Oakdale Cemetery. Uh, so those, uh, positions total seven hundred and four thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars, of which we have offsetting revenues of two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars on those positions. Libraries, um, we're, uh, we're proposing to, uh, fund those no differently than last year. Good Old Library requested four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. They were funded last year at three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-five. Springvale Library requested a hundred and sixty-four eight, uh, the amount that they were funded at last year. Outside agencies, there is a, um, sixteen thousand dollar increase there in, in the outside agencies. All of which are funded at last year's level with a singular exception of York County, uh, Community Action Program under the transportation piece. Um, I have, I'm making a recommendation that the full thirty-five thousand dollar request be supported. Uh, that request has not been supported at that level, uh, before, but I, I would request that they come in and explain as to the increased level of services that can be obtained here in the city, uh, should the city be able to fund that at the full amount of court requested. And the Chamber of Commerce would be at a membership dues, no different than last year, uh, as, uh, the city funded it. The next major change is debt service. Uh, for this year, we have a current proposal of one million, eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, that is an increase of eighty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars or four point seven three percent. Um, the major changes there, uh, is, uh, it would have been a twenty-nine thousand dollar reduction, but the addition of a proposed ten-year bond, two and a half percent APR. Uh, that's actually a one million dollar bond for a hundred and fourteen thousand, four seventy-two each of, of the next ten years. Um, in the planning department, in the capital improvements program, there was a request for a million dollars, uh, match for, uh, a five million dollar proposed acquisition under the EPA Brownsville program, working in conjunction with the Southern Maine Regional Planning Commission. In order to support that, I, I was not able to support that as a one-year allocation under the capital improvements program because it would, uh, represent, uh, a significant increase in that overall program. But do find the ability that if the council approves this, uh, after, if it's a recommendation from the budget committee and the council approv- approves this moving forward, we'd go to voter referendum, uh, on the scope of work, and this is focused on addressing the first elements of the international woolen mill. So the boiler house and other work associated with addressing that, uh, this property. Also in there is the second phase of the Presidential Lane Extension. The need for that is sooner than later. So I'm also calling that out for a, that should, should be a five-year bond, not a ten-year bond, but a five-year bond at two and a half percent. It'll be fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars each of, uh, the next five years. And we find the ability to have offsetting revenue and cash flow that from the new development that's coming in at a very rapid pace there. Again, this is the schedule that represents the debt service. Uh, you can see of that one point eight million dollar, uh, department outlay for fiscal twenty-two, twenty-three. We have four hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars as minimum offsetting revenue for a net cost of one point four. Capital program, this is where we struggle the most. Uh, we, we did, um, did almost a three million dollar reduction in the capital request that was there. We're currently at thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars less than last year's allocation or a point eight five percent increase. Uh, that is greater than the four percent that's called up by the charter. Uh, but the city has made, uh, additional commitments as far as to streets and roads as well as to the parks and recreation department and, uh, the bonding of the LED streetlights. So all of that is encompassed in here. The Lane Bank, uh, is to receive three hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars, the LED streetlight payments, uh, broadband access of two hundred thousand dollars, which has opera offsetting revenues in there and, uh, some further work in the Midtown Mall concourse lighting. Code Enforcement has twelve thousand, five hundred dollars in there in net cost, uh, to replace, uh, one of, one of the vehicles. They're actually going to eliminate a vehicle and do a replacement on one, their overall fleet from four to three vehicles. Police Department, two hundred and forty thousand, five hundred and seven dollars. There's the replacement of three cruisers for this year. Uh, body armor, uh, new security video system for the, uh, now twelve-year-old building. Replacement of some of the rifle stock and a side-by-side ATV, uh, post-trade, uh, to be able to do, uh, enforcement out of the, the trail network. This also includes the purchase of the previously five leased vehicles. We found the inability to lease vehicles at this point in time cost-effectively, so we will be purchasing out that fleet of vehicles. Fire Department has an allocation of four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars of seven vehicles are currently under lease between firefighting apparatus and ambulances. Uh, and for the first time this year, there is a request for, and I absolutely support this, and you will see that analysis for a tactical support assistive vehicle. What takes place is when an ambulance rolls for, uh, an EMS response. Depending upon the, the type of call, many times this secondary support staff rolls with that. And they're rolling out with, uh, the city's most expensive vehicles, be it a tanker or sometimes even the, the quint in order to get that additional staff to the scene. By given the sheer number of volume, when we run the analysis on a cost per mile to run, uh, out as a transport vehicle, a firefighting apparatus versus a tactical, uh, support assist vehicle, which would be, uh, an F-one-fifty crew cab vehicle, uh, we can support the, uh, cost of purchasing that by the, the savings used cost of operating the, uh, vehicles. Airport has a call out of eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars for improvements to the airport terminal and as well as completing the airport layout plan. The, um, the development at the airport has happened at such a rapid pace that we've, uh, Miss Roger, uh, Miss Navia has actually outpaced, uh, the airport layout and we need to update that, uh, in, in a much sooner fashion than what we had originally anticipated. Parks and Recreation has a call out of two hundred and eighty-five thousand, nine hundred dollars. Uh, that would include, uh, the completion of Benton Park improvements, Carpenter Park improvements. Trail improvements in there, there's the acquisition of a new pickup and there's the acquisition of a John Deere and, uh, BenTrak tractor. Includes resurfacing of the courts, uh, parking lot pavement and, and parking lot pavement at Gowron Park. And of course, there's the offsetting revenue there of ninety-five thousand dollars and change that's coming from the opera funds, partially offsetting that two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Municipal facilities, they're carrying adequate reserves there currently, uh, for the municipal facilities. This sixty thousand dollars, uh, is a, uh, new request and that, uh, stems from a council directive to look at the renovations of the old, uh, Chamber of Commerce space adjacent to Main Street to renovate that, to move the Gulf Council forward into that space. Public Works has a call out of two million, eight hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and three dollars. That includes two point two five million dollars of, of streets and roads. Five hundred thousand dollars, uh, into the fleet management program for various, uh, equipment and other improvements there within the department. Please note that that, uh, two point two five million dollars is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars less than the two point five million dollar ramp-up that was in there this year. So that will be something that will be subject to further debate. Reason I was comfortable in reducing that down to the, uh, two million, two hundred and fifty thousand as opposed to the two point five million is we reasonably believe that we're going to obtain that twenty million dollar plus, um, raise grant and that could greatly, uh, change how it is and the sum of money and, uh, that we'll need to put into the Streets and Roads program. And may allow us long-term to lower that ramp-up rate, uh, from a half million dollar per year to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. IS or Information Systems, uh, Systems has a call out of ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars. Typical replacement of the computers, uh, each of, uh, one of the five years for replacement of the computers. Uh, the server virtualization lease that continues in there and the network infrastructure lease as well as storage array leases. For the first time, because of the advent of Sanford that fiber, we are going to have off-site storage, not either here and or at the, uh, police department, but it will be up at the, uh, Brunswick Naval Air Station, uh, at the computer center up there. Uh, and a significant amount of work, I want to commend our IS department. They have been putting us as employees through training on computer infiltrations and such unto that, uh, doing internal phishing with us to, for training on that. And the network, uh, security that they've been putting in place is, is absolutely second to none. Uh, just want the people to know that the city's information and, uh, services are, are being well-protected, provided this goes through. Uh, we would be in a scenario that if, uh, the, the Russian trolls hacked us and demanded money for all of our services, we would lose more than fifteen minutes and we can spin up virtual servers, uh, within seconds in uneven blink. So I want to commend our IS department for being able to see the foresight and put that in place. So in the capital program, we have offsetting revenues of four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars, uh, a thousand comes from the opera funds. Eight thousand, three hundred and seventy for Parks and Recreation of trade-in vehicles. Ninety-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven of opera funds for the Carpenter Park Playground. And a hundred and five thousand dollars for Department of Public Works, uh, equipment that they, surplus equipment that they have sold, uh, through municipal bid and other means, they're bringing back into the offsetting revenues for this year. On the municipal revenue side, uh, the fiscal year twenty-three is calling out at three point eight million dollars. We have projected increase currently of three hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars or ten point five one percent. I believe that is under-projected, uh, this year on revenue sharing simply because the state's newly projected numbers are not available to us yet. The state's economy has been doing very well, better than what was previously projected in prior year. So as soon as we get those new, uh, projections, we'll be able to increase this line item, uh, I believe by, uh, two to three hundred thousand dollars at a, at a bare minimum. The other municipal revenue, uh, comes in at eleven point nine million dollars this year. Uh, that's a seven hundred and sixty-one thousand dollar increase or six point seven eight percent. Uh, looking at the various changes, automobile excise, excise tax is flat for this year. That's an anomaly to us because of the difficulty of people obtaining new vehicles and releasing new vehicles. Uh, we, we're, uh, not seeing the typical growth in that line as originally, uh, uh, there's a sixty-six thousand dollar decrease in debt service reimbursement. Investment income is decreasing by a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Ambulance fees are increasing by two hundred and twenty thousand. Building permits are up by an additional fifty thousand dollars. It astounds me the amount of building activity and the permit fees that are being collected in there. Overall, cemetery fees are up by thirteen thousand dollars. Uh, pay-as-you-throw is at a zero change right now. Uh, Ronnie and I are sitting on that again this week. We believe there's further changes stemming there to the positive. Waste transfer, transfer fees are up by eight thousand dollars. Uh, that's an economic indicator. You can look at your ambulance fees and you can look at your waste transfer fees. Recreation fees are up by sixty-three thousand, eight hundred dollars, uh, because of the advent and the bringing back full programming, uh, as well as, uh, other programming improvements that are currently being proposed. And this number itself could be subject to a positive change, uh, as we get it further into the budget process. Airport revenues are up by nearly sixty-five thousand dollars. Planning revenues are up by twenty-seven thousand. Reimbursement under, for our MDEA agent that we have assigned is up by twenty-seven thousand dollars. Dispatch pursuant to the contract agreements we have with our host, with our, uh, served communities is up by a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. There is, uh, four hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars of opera funds that are coming in, uh, to, to the positive. And the all-other revenues have, see a net decrease of eighty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars. Use of undesignated, uh, funds this year, we're, we're putting that at the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar historical mark. That, that is a very much a sustainable mark for us. In there, there was an increase of a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars that was brought forward last year, uh, to, uh, fund the nine months of the two firefighter EMS positions, uh, that was gleaned from prior operations. Currently, our undesignated fund balance for the city is at seven million, forty-six thousand dollars. And the school has a fund balance of two million, five hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars pursuant to our last audit, so nine point six million dollars. thousand dollars pursuant to our last auditor, so nine point six million dollars. That's deemed as a sustainable level by our auditor as well as our finance department. Homestead, we're not anticipating any changes to that at this point in time. Same for Betty, and the same for municipal overlay at two hundred and seventy thousand six hundred and eleven dollars. If you take all of those elements as I presented to you here tonight, that currently calls out for a net increase to taxation of seven hundred and forty seven thousand one hundred and eight dollars or two point two one percent. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Steve. And I'm going to open it up if any councillors have questions. I just have, I just noted that last one on the homestead, I think the state reimbursement is going to go from seventy to seventy three percent in this year, and that's in the supplement, and that was part of last year's budget, so, and I think that I just read today that that's still in there. Trying to think what else did I have that I had a question? Oh, did the information systems piece, did that include the move into the new space, or was that? Remember, we were...
No, we have that under facilities, that fund, those funds are already there, so we didn't have to anticipate any new costs for that.
Excellent. Okay. All right, I saw councillor Brink's hand up first, and then councillor Stackpole. Go ahead, Becky.
Well, first of all, I want to say what an excellent job both the schools and the municipal side have done throughout the past two years of COVID. It's pretty impressive that everything has kept running, nothing has really shut down for an extended period of time, so I want to commend everybody for doing that. Also, I think it's an amazing job done with the budget. I think it's very impressive. One of the things that I'm just concerned about is that we spoke earlier about the police department numbers not being balanced at the number of citizens we have. We have new businesses coming to town, we have new homes being built, and I know we talked about getting up to forty two officers, so are we at that number with this budget, or do we need to still work on adding those in?
Forty two.
I know we have a lot of people who talk about it.
Chief Anderson, I think we're authorized at forty at this point in time.
Yeah, it's forty, it's forty now, and then we...
Until this is resolved, no.
I'm sorry, Craig.
Yes, sorry.
Okay, they're muted, go ahead.
We're at forty now, with the cops grant will be forty one, and we had talked about getting to forty two with the traffic officer.
Oh, so this doesn't include the traffic officer?
So we need to get to that traffic officer, because we've had a few complaints, a few, you know, that we do need one.
Thank you, councillor Brink. Is that, are you done? Okay, councillor Stackpole, go ahead.
Yeah, also, excellent presentation as usual, Steve, very informative. You know my concerns in the past. Is there a way that you could break out for the council or for the Budget Committee members of all the positions, even part time positions that are being funded with Opera Funds, so we can take a look at that? And I don't know if there is a, is there a comprehensive look at Opera, what it's, what it's being used to fund, and I'm looking at that specifically in relation to the budget. You know, my typical concerns are the fiscal cliff, and it's all manageable to put peoples, particularly department heads, at rest. I'm not a budget slasher, I just want to make sure we're not setting ourselves up for some, and I'm sure this is being considered all the way through by you, Steve, and others, we're not setting ourselves up for some kind of fiscal cliff in future years when the Opera Funds are not available. That's my basic premise for asking this. So let me that, however you choose to do that, I think that would, I think that would be very helpful.
So I have in prior analysis what we viewed as being the fiscal cliff, if there is such a thing with the Opera Funds, and I believe it was predominantly around the social worker aspect, but I haven't been able to account for yet at this point in time is the dollar amount or the potential use of the opioid funds that are coming. So the, our law firm has come to agreement with the state of Maine. They have the funding formula out there now, but they can't give us a dollar amount yet at this point in time. So you can look at the funding formula, rather a mess, it's a very messy formula, so I'm going to hold until our next council meeting to be able to hopefully ascertain what that dollar amount is going to be for this year and the ensuing years, for which I would then anticipate putting that towards that funding of that social worker position, and then perhaps be able to free up that amount of money under the Opera Funds for the council to reauthorize a, to reauthorize in a new area.
Great, yeah, and when I talk about this information, I mean, certainly doesn't have to be done, you know, quickly, you know, as long as it's at the beginning of the budget process, for me as a budget committee member, you know, I'm happy with that, so a few weeks down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Stackpole, and I'm just gonna, Steve, before I go on with questions, I'm just letting everybody know, this is a presentation for the city council. I have turned off the chat, because the chat is not for conversations between people. We're going to have our discussions in public for everyone, and only we are privy to the chat, the people that are on the Zoom. So the chat is not for questions. If there is, if I open this up to the public, which I don't think I'm going to do, because this is just the preliminary presentation to the council, there will be a public hearing at the, I think it's March seventeenth, when the, both of the city council and the school committee will have a joint meeting, and there will be public comment at every single budget committee meeting. This is for the council right now, so if anybody's wondering why the chat's off, that's why. I will call on councillor Hanselman next, and then councillor Martell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to concur or offer my agreement with councillor Brink, as a member of the City Committee the last four year, going on four years, one of the reoccurring issues we have is related to traffic, and I feel like there'd be a lot of support from our community in investing in a traffic position, so I just want to mention that. And then in terms of questions, I have two at the moment. Steve, I wasn't clear in the presentation, is the timing of the raise grant such that we could actually know prior to the end of the budget process if that will assist us in this upcoming fiscal year, or would that be for the following fiscal year?
It would be for the following fiscal year. So the application is due April fourteenth, and the announcement on the raise grant is September of this year.
Thank you. And then another one, which I'm not sure if you have as easily at your fingertips, but I'd be curious about, is the projected increase in the TIF amount. I believe it is projected to go up this year, correct?
I expect it to, yes. So I've been working with George Green, our assessor, he's integral as far as my ability to project what those increases will be. I do know that there are going to be valuation adjustments on many of the commercial and multi-tenant units that comprise, comprise a large part, especially the downtown TIF district and some of the other TIF areas. That being said, it will throw off more revenue, so even if the assessor won't fully commit to that early in the budget process, I will get enough information out of him that I will make the projections on my own and admit those as part of the budget process to ensure that we're not waiting a year to then backtrack and utilize those revenues, but we're capturing those in current year. So we did an exceptionally good job on that last year, doing those projections, we're able to utilize virtually every penny of that, and I think giving those increases this year, that's further opportunity on our revenue side to offset some of the expense increases that you see here this year.
Thank you.
Councillor Martell?
Yep, thank you for putting this together, Steve. I had a couple of questions around the road budget and the items related to that. I've seen a lot of, let's just say, posts and traffic about potholes and things like that recently, and is, is there, I'm not sure which line item this would fall under, but is that something that's limited by one of these budget line items, or are there other factors at play? I'm just wondering how we could best mitigate this yearly issue that seems to come up a lot, and it may just be, you know, a combination of factors with the weather, but I don't know if you had any comments or thoughts on that.
I think you can best mitigate it by staying the course for the council's commitment as far as the level of input. So the, between the bond piece that was done at six and a half million plus the ramp up on the CIP, we were able to achieve an overall average of four million dollars per year input over the next twenty years. So that was the number that was determined pursuant to our engineered pavement condition index study that was done, that was necessary to raise our PCI index, a pavement condition index, to get that at eighty five and greater. At that point in time, your maintenance cost will significantly begin to drop. We're not there yet, because we're only three years into that, into that program, and again, you're seeing extraordinary times, the freeze thaw, it just, it just makes my heart sink, because when you get this warm up, and then you get the rain, and the rain infiltrates the cracks and stuff, and then you get an immediate cold snap, that is the worst thing that can happen to our roads. They travel, cracking becomes very, very increased, and we get the breakup of the pavement. So until we're able to get all of the road bases addressed, Public Works is, we're really shifting the focus to maintenance, 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 and then preserving our construction dollars for the overall piece. Director Hill has done a great work in analyzing, you know, the crack sealing, the fog sealing, all of those high maintenance items, and gets those road bases sealed up until such time as you can get to them for full scale reconstruction and or maintenance overlay. So I realize that the complaints are out there right now, there's little, little that we can do to change that at this juncture in time, other than staying the course for putting the municipal, the resources into this municipal program and getting the work done.
Thank you, Steve. Jonathan, I don't see your hand up anymore, so I'm assuming you are, you don't have any other questions?
Yeah, that was the question I had for, thank you.
Steve, I'm, I'm gonna, I have one comment, and it's relating to our priorities, and I have to say that I agree with councillor Hanselman and councillor Brink, that that traffic enforcement piece, I honestly thought that was going to be in this budget. It probably, there may be things that for me, that that's a higher priority, because it's a safety issue, it's a consistency issue, it's just, you know, there are complaints that we hear constantly about this in various areas, and it just seems to me that it's something that I thought we were going to address in this budget. So my suggestion would be that maybe you have the ability to have those figures there in case the budget committee in going through this process decides that they want to put that back in. I think you've heard from three councillors that it was a priority for us. Let's just see where it goes. Councillor Hanselman, go ahead.
Sorry, I just wanted to add, and one of the reasons I really like this conversation in a workshop format is the conversational nature of it. I'm glad, however, to be having it here, because it's more accessible to, I think, a higher volume of community participants to hear it. But I did want to share that one of the things I think is always hard, having been on the budget committee, is not knowing that you're going through that process as a budget committee member, and then not necessarily knowing where your fellow city councillors are in terms of the end game, so to speak. And so one of my fears is that in the process, a lot of work goes into putting together both municipal and the school budget, and then it cleans at the council level, and big adjustments are made. That, you know, hasn't typically been the case, but it's a concern of mine, and I voiced my wish to have this be a charter discussion at some point. A long story short, I just want to share with folks who haven't been watching the school department budget meetings, which have been really helpful and informative, that they are bringing forward their official numbers at their next school committee meeting, but it's looking like a possible five point eight percent increase to their expenditures of a little under three point three million, with a net change to their taxation of one point one million roughly, which if that was the case, added on to our current numbers, which I hear Steve saying optimistically that ours will go down, you know, that would be a five point five percent increase to net to taxation, and almost a dollar is going to be changed to the middle rate. So, you know, I just want to put that out there from a conversation standpoint, if anybody wants to share their gut reaction, it feels high to me.
You know, and councillor Hanselman, I appreciate that you're looking at the expenses, and I really believe that revenues are going to come in higher, and we're, and we have to remember that we put almost a million dollars of excess school revenue last year into saving taxes, so if you took that nine hundred and plus dollars, and that was part of their, their carryover, they would be hardly up at all. So I guess I prefer to look at, you know, what we need, and what the schools need, and what the city needs, and, you know, three councillors are going to sit on the budget committee, and if they have a question about our priorities in terms of where the direction is going, eventually it comes back to us. So I feel like we get a lot of pieces at that pie, and I appreciate the hard work that the school committee's done as well. So I guess I'm looking at what we call a needs based budget, you know, if, like, show us that you really need it, and prove that to us, and I know Steve has been through this, he's been probably bombarded by all of his department heads about what they all need, and he has to balance all of that against what you just talked about, that increase in taxes, that we're all going to have to either live with, or we're going to have to fight for. So I appreciate the presentation this evening. Honestly, there were a few surprises in there for me, the deputy, or was it an assistant chief at the fire department, which I think will, you know, you'll have to probably explain that much further at the budget committee level, and, and the fact that there wasn't a traffic officer in the police department. So other than that, I think it looked like what we've kind of been directing you to do all year long. I mean, this just doesn't happen overnight. Go ahead, Steve.
I will say, because hopefully my chief is still on air, and I see DC Small, I believe, is still with us as well, as far as the traffic officer is concerned, that's an allocation of the workforce, right, as to whether we're going to dedicate one within the workforce to do that. So we have the advent of the, from forty to forty one via the cops grant, and it's a specific use that we have to do for that. It's always been for me a balance, balance sheet item as to who's dedicated amongst those forty one now to be a traffic officer as opposed to patrol, so.
Okay.
I think that's still open for how the resources are allocated, or the positions are allocated within the department.
Thank you, Steve. I appreciate what you're saying, but in the, in the end, if we want traffic enforcement, we need to make sure we have adequate personnel to do all the things that they're required to do, just my opinion. So any other questions for Steve, by councillors, or comments?
I think for me, as the manager, one of the elements that I just, I feel the least ability to impact is the continuation of the shifts, right? The greatest impact of COVID on municipal operations has been the shift within the taxable base, the valuation shift that's come from the housing pressures that have come from the external, you know, people in the very urbanized areas moving out of those, those urban centers and moving, moving here to figure the quality of life, driving the home prices up significantly, has shifted dramatically. Who pays what within our taxable base? So continue to look at that. I'll commend George Green, our lead assessor, he and his team have done a great job of trying to keep pace with all of those changes in the marketplace, and we're looking for some positive change in there that hopefully will mitigate some of that impact that we saw last year in this year's assessed base.
Thank you, Steve. Anything else from anyone? Okay. Thanks, Steve. Okay, next item is public participation. Okay, next item is public participation. And I know, can we just go back to the, stop the screen share if that's just for a minute, Steve? Because I know we have at least one person who was on here who wanted to comment. Oh, there he is. Hi Brett. Brett Williams, go ahead. Just say who you are and where you live and tell us what you have. And it's for something that's not on the agenda, correct?
That's correct, yeah. My name is Brett Williams. I am a lifelong resident of Sanford. I live on Preventure Lane, which is off of Grammar Road. And that's what I'm speaking about tonight. The corner of Grammar Road and Grammar Street has been a cause of concern for our family for several decades. My entire lifetime, as a matter of fact. And it's a terrifying intersection, and I believe it has a dubious distinction of being perhaps the most dangerous intersection in the city, second maybe to the roundabout right now. Not only is it a high-traffic intersection, it's also on a very sharp curve, has poor visibility. And crossing the street by car or by foot is just a terrifying proposition on a good day in the summer, let alone winter. And I've personally seen several dozen major accidents at this intersection over the years, several dozen. Here's a sampling of just the past three weeks. In late January, my father witnessed a concrete truck take the corner so fast that it was unable to stop for traffic. And that truck spilled its load of concrete across the intersection, or at least part of its load. The week of that, my, or the week after that, my wife was walking and came upon a vehicle that had just careened around the corner and landed in a snowbank. And if you know my wife, she's, she ably pushed that car out of that snowbank with, with some neighbors. But it was a dangerous proposition because cars continued to go by her. And then the week after that, she witnessed another major accident, this time between a small car and a large pickup truck. And that truck flipped, the car was crushed. She was just a few steps being, from being in the middle of that wreck. Last year, my kid's school bus coming to a stop at that corner was nearly rear-ended as a vehicle did not slow down behind the bus. And my quick-thinking bus driver, the amazing Nikki Buswell, took evasive action and avoided a very, very serious collision there. I, the stories go on and on and on, and I just live in fear that my family, my kids are just going to be another statistic on that corner. And of course, the danger's been ratcheted up in recent years because more cars use Grammar Road as a bypass to the busy Main Street. And more Main Street traffic means more people trying to get around it. And they're just barreling through our neighborhood at very, very high rates of speed. I would love Grammar Road and our intersection to develop that reputation that the High Pine area of Wells has, that you just don't speed through there. It's a neighborhood, you don't take your chances because you're going to get pulled over. There's just no regular predictable enforcement. I've seen patrols in the area, but no traffic, traffic stops or speed traps, I think is the word for it. I'd love to. And I'd also recommend a traffic study so we can just have some hard data in order to evaluate options at that intersection if it needs to, a redesign of the intersection or other safety measures. I thank you all for your consideration and I appreciate all you do for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Brett. Any other comments by the public for items that are not on the agenda? I don't see any other hands up, so I will close public comments. Public hearings. City Council will take public comment on the following. 22-43-01. A public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Five Jacks Production LLC for a medical marijuana grower-cultivator license at 72 Emory Street, Unit 210, Sanford, Maine. Declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Being none, I will close the public hearing. 22-51-01. A public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by CNM Farms for a medical marijuana grower-cultivator license at 27 Hancock Lane, Building Number 4, Sanford, Maine. Declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Being none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Consent agenda, 22-44-01. Order to approve the following license renewal request and to authorize the city clerk to sign on behalf of the city council should the meeting be held remotely due to COVID-19 protocols. Hearing no objections, the consent agenda is approved. Old business. 22-24-01. Order to review and vote on whether to extend the emergency temporary policy for masking in municipal facilities. Steve, do you want to present on this first before we have a motion?
So the, the current temporary masking policy for the municipal facilities will end this Friday at the 17th, unless acted upon by the city council. I noted that the, today's presentation with York County Emergency Management, Adam Hartwig from the State CDC presented very favorable numbers, numbers trending downwards significantly. Hospitalizations have been cut by half. ICU utilization is down significantly. He noted the, the trending lines for both Massachusetts and New Hampshire, which he references each week when we meet on this, we're usually a week to a week and a half behind them. Their numbers have dropped precipitously in comparison. So we're seeing the very positive trends there. I'm hearing now the discussion of, of epidemic versus pandemic. Nobody's made that determination yet, but those, those are the discussions on the table. Looking at the schools, they, they're discussing, the superintendents are discussing statewide with Dr. Shaw and the CDC, main CDC, the removal of the mandatory masks as far as all schools are concerned, converting that over to optional. City of Portland just list, lifted their mask mandate for all indoor facilities as well. And other states are dropping their mask mandates as, as well. Consultation with our city clerk earlier today. She indicated that the staff felt comfortable within those offices, that if the, the mask, indoor mask policy was, was lifted and or removed, that we'd go back to the strongly suggesting masking inside of the facilities and that the employees would still retain the option of wearing masks if they so chose. So that's all I have to report on at this point in time.
Thank you, Steve. So basically, we can let it expire on Friday or we can vote to extend it for another 30 days. And I put this on here with no recommendation because I really think it's up to the council to decide. And so it's open for discussion. Does anybody want to share their feelings? Counselor Martel?
Yeah, I, I think the data is trending down and I'd like to let it expire.
Counselor Stackpole? You're muted.
Yeah, I got you. You know, I, I'm sure as for the rest of the council, the, the effect this is going to have on the municipal employees is important. I mean, I think that was a, one of the major reasons why we put this in in the first place. So I'm reassured by the information from the, the city manager that Sue Cody, I don't want to say she's in favor of it, but she's had that conversation with her staff and they're comfortable lifting, lifting the mandate. I, you know, frankly, I, I, you know, I'm, I'm going to go with the way of the, of the council, I think. I'll listen to the wisdom of the council. I'm not sure it's time yet. Probably 30 days is too long, but that, that's kind of where I'm at. And it sounds to me like the employees are, are comfortable lifting the, the mandate, which helps in making the decision.
Thank you, Counselor Stackpole. Any other counselors want to weigh in? Counselor Hanselman, go ahead.
Thank you. You know, I, I think that we were probably late in putting the mandate into place. And Deputy Mayor Curle, he talked about that at one point. But, so at, at this point, you know, with the numbers trending in the direction they are and like Counselor Stackpole said, comments from key staff with their comfort level, to me, feels the most important. So I, I, I would probably be in favor of lifting the mandate at this point, or letting it expire, that is, knowing that we can obviously revisit it if things change.
Yeah, I, I just remember last summer when everything just kind of went away real quickly and then it came back just as quickly. So yes, I think that we have the ability to, to move quickly if we need to. I'm okay with letting it expire. And, but I would still like to strongly suggest that people that come in are masked. I'm still masked when I go into indoor public spaces and I would expect to be doing that for quite a while. Any other comments? So the way things, things stand, Steve, if there is no action on this item and there is not a motion to extend the mandate, then it would just expire on Friday. So we do not need to have any action otherwise. Is there a motion to extend? I do not see one. I think you have your answer, Steve. I think we're going to just let it expire on Friday.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. New business. 22-61-01. Order to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Revise LLC for redesign and upgrade of the City of Sanford website. I'm not going to ask for a motion yet. I'm going to ask for a presentation. And I just want to say that, I want to remind the council that next week, on Tuesday evening, we have a workshop with the communications director to discuss our vision and, you know, discussion with her back and forth on, on what she sees the, the needs are of the community, having been here now for, for a couple of months. And tonight is really, we're going to confine this to the website and the, and the, and the need for, to have somebody come in and redesign it for us and how she's come to the recommendation that she's making this evening. So if we get too far into, as they say, the weeds, I'm going to bring you all back and say next Tuesday, write those down because that'll be part of that discussion. Have I got it right, Jordan?
Yeah, you got it perfect.
Okay, then I'm going to let, I'm not going to even, Steve, you don't even need to be here, right? I can just hand it right over to Jordan?
You can, absolutely.
Laura's yours, Jordan. Thank you.
Okay, who has control of the screen? Because I accidentally uploaded my files backwards. So if you want to start at the bottom, we can work our way in reverse. Perfect, thank you. If you wanted to scroll just a little bit. Perfect. Okay, so I'm here tonight to discuss why we need a new website. Our current website has many deficiencies and is inadequately serving our community. Our site lacks ease of use. The information can be very hard to find. For example, if you search recycling on our website, the first displayed result is the trash and recycling pickup schedule, which is perfect. But items from 2001, 2002, 2003, and 2005 should not be displayed above the recycling do's and don'ts. So if you scroll down a little bit, it's actually the 16th displayed result. Additionally, see it's right at the bottom, that should be displayed second. And these items are very old that are being displayed first. So if you happen to search a building permit, who do I contact for a construction permit is actually the 25th displayed result. And if you scroll up, whoever has the screen, sorry. You can see it actually doesn't even display on the search results because it's so far down. Our residents aren't finding the information they're looking for in two to four clicks, which could be turning them away from our site and leading them to call the first number they find or resorting to Facebook. And accessing these documents can be very time-consuming, trying to find it. And then additionally, it takes one to two extra clicks to open up a PDF. Our site is not mobile-friendly and in 2020, 68% of all website visits came from a mobile device. And I'm sure in our town where everyone does not have access to a desktop computer, this number is higher. And it only further highlights the need for us to have a fully mobile site. Additionally, our current site does not have an ADH checker, so we could inadvertently be creating more barriers for our disabled residents. And lastly, for some, the website could be the first point of contact they have with our city. And our out-of-date site is not effectively marketing Sanford. Some of our information is no longer relevant. And honestly, the, the design of our site just looks older. After talking with GovOffice, our current vendor, I actually found out that our site is so out of date, they would not be able to replicate the same site. And we do not have features, we don't have access to many newer features. I researched hosting our own site via WordPress, but I think for us, it just makes more sense to go with a website vendor that specifically hosts municipal or government sites. That is how I came to Revise, Civic Plus, and Granicus. I spoke with our current provider, GovOffice, about a redesign through them. However, to me, it didn't feel as though they valued us as an existing customer. It took a month for us to get our customer success specialist on the phone and another two weeks to get a proposal back. And it was just kind of off-putting to find out that we had, don't have access to these newer features and no one reached out to us earlier about a redesign. So when speaking to our, or the three potential vendors, I had three main points that I was focusing on. I wanted ease of use on the front end and ability for our site visitors to find relevant information quickly. I wanted a flexible and simple design on the back end. I wanted it to be easy for city employees to upload their information. And I wanted us to have the ability to change certain design aspects as Sanford continues to evolve. And lastly, I wanted a more timeless design, one that doesn't scream 2020, five years down the road, but five years down the road still looks new, clean, and modern. So now we can kind of get into my comparison of the four sites. Looking at the quotes, obviously the quote is an important factor when making this decision. And Revise came in at the lowest at 17.7 and Civic Plus came in at the highest, at about $24,000. Next, we can move on to the timeline. And the timeline for our website is going to be about four months, give or take, which isn't an issue. We've had our current site for about five years, so a couple extra months isn't going to be a big deal. GovOffice had the quickest timeline and I assume that is partially because they are our current provider. So there's not as much getting to know each other that has to happen on the front end and we can kind of jump into that project if we decided to go with them. Next is a mobile-friendly design. As I said earlier, at least 68% of all website visits come from a mobile device, which highlights the need for us to have a mobile-friendly site. And almost every site being created in 2022 is going to be mobile-friendly. And all of the vendors I spoke to utilize a mobile response platform. A mobile response platform simply means that the site can figures and optimizes for any spring size. And Revise has actually been doing this since 2014. But what is unique about Granicus is that if we decide to go with them, we have the ability to decide how our mobile site acts and looks. Next is customer service. I think customer service is going to be, or for me, was a big deciding factor since this is going to be a big change for many city employees. And as you can see, Revise and GovOffice offer free unlimited training. And Revise offers unlimited training refreshers after the site is live for any employees that need that additional help or for newer employees. All of the website vendors offer 24/7 chat support except for GovOffice. And the unique thing about Revise is that we are able to have a service level guarantee based on the urgency that we preset with certain work orders. So if something is urgent, we should have a response with an answer in about 15 minutes. So what I think is the best is that their unlimited free training and training refreshers, like I said, this is going to be a big change and we want to have that support along the way. Next is web design. If we, at our price point with Civic Plus, we could choose one of their five fixed layout designs. The design aspects are pretty set. We can change the branding, so our logo and colors and images on the homepage. But for the most part, that homepage is going to be locked in. We have more design freedom off of the homepage, but it's a templated look, so it's going to be pretty locked in. Next would be Granicus and GovOffice as they have a semi-custom or semi-templated design, which is more fluid and we are able to replicate more expensive sites at a lower price point. price point. And then we have Revise, which is fully custom and therefore provides us with the most design input. And what's unique about Revise is that we are able to decide who we want to work with as our site creator based off of their previous work portfolio with Revise. And so as I spoke on earlier, the search for our current website is not adequately providing queries or results back to the search query. So that was important when talking to these four vendors, and also vendors utilize an analytic search, which means they rely on the site analytics for the most clicked or relevant information, and that is primarily what Civic Plus relies on for their search. Granicus utilizes page description tags, which are selected by us on the back end when we are uploading a document. And Gov Office utilizes a keyword search, which means data feelers kind of scan the site for the keywords that were entered into the search bar to pull more relevant information. But what's unique about Revise is their curated search means that we are able to curate how we want the search results to display. So say Public Works uploads a new document about pay-as-you throw, we could have that document display first, even though it's not the most relevant or most clicked response. Additionally, all of these sites offer many similar included features such as email and text subscribers, and we are able to formulate those emails or texts on the back end of our site. They have online bill paying, job postings, and ability to apply for positions on the site. I spoke with Information Systems throughout this whole process, and they agree with me that it's time to move on to a new vendor, and I wanted their blessing since this will be a big change for them as well. And they assured me they backed my decision. So with that, it is my recommendation that we go into agreement with Revise for a new website. Revise offers a fully custom site at the lowest price point, and their customer service will provide the support needed to make this change. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Jordan. I just, can I, I have a couple of questions before I turn it over and ask for others?
Yep.
Have you, can you tell us some other communities that actually use Revise?
Yeah, so our price point communities such as St. Pete, Florida, and New Bern, North Carolina utilize our site, and I can also provide more at the workshop if you would like.
That would be great. And I just, and you did, and you did get opinions of satisfaction, ask, you know, other communities if they're satisfied, that they can do what they say they can do? Or that they actually follow through?
I actually had found a few online, too, of people comparing them. So it was a, not a full customer, but more like a company that put in a request or proposal, and I was able to read the differences between them. So it was like nice to see. And so I talked to IS, and they had kind of vetted their responses. IS had sent me certain questions to ask them, because I don't know the whole tech backside of that, and so I kind of relied on them for that to make sure that the answers were up to par.
Okay, I have a couple other questions, but I'm going to go in and go first to Counselor Martel.
Yeah, I, thank you. I had a couple of similar questions. You said you had not reached out to other communities that had used this company. Is that correct?
I haven't reached out to anyone specifically, but I have done, I did some research online, and like I said, I had relied on IS for the kind of technical backside.
Well, do you think before the, the meeting we have, is it next week, you'd be able to do that?
Yeah, I can do that.
There's a difference between, say, you know, a city site and something for a commercial business, and the traffic is a bit different, and the searches are going to be different, and I think that the feedback will be different as well. So I just want to make sure that we're, you know, understanding that and looking into that a little bit.
Yes, I can ask for them. And it is, like I said, all of the vendors that I spoke to focus specifically on hosting municipal or government sites.
Okay, well, thank you.
Jordan, what did you say was the company that we've been using?
We've been using Gov Office.
Oh, okay.
And so even if we were to do a redesign with our current vendor, that is about three thousand more dollars than what Revise is.
Well, it seems to me, though, that they didn't even bother to reach out to us, and the fact that you couldn't reach them, if right there, would eliminate them in my mind, so.
Yes.
Counselor Brink?
I would have to agree with Counselor Martel, but I'd go a little bit further. Jordan, if you could send us the sites for the different cities who use the companies so that before the next week's meeting, we go on and look at their sites, I'd like to explore their sites and see how user-friendly they really are.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Of course.
Counselor Hanselman?
Thank you. I just want to say, Jordan, I don't think any of us will disagree with some of the issues you pointed out, and I'm excited myself to be working on this with you. And great presentation as well. My only question I'd like to address next Tuesday in workshop is relative to whether or not there are any integration or efficiencies with Granicus related to the fact that we use Granicus, I legislate for our agenda packets and so forth, that would be significantly savings in time for staff. That's my only question on Granicus, although Revise seems to be a clear winner, but, so thank you.
Yeah, I will look that up. I'll dig into it a little more.
Steve, you want to comment on the process?
So, just a moment. I commend Jordan for the exceptional amount of research that she's done on this. Counselor Hanselman, I had the same question you did. Is there, is there an advantage with Granicus? Because we utilize their other platforms and such and that. To date, we've not been able to identify any tie-in or linking that would be beneficial from the services that we use from them now versus the website. It is safe to say, when it comes to analytic versus curated search mechanisms and such and that, it was with the top, right? So that's why Jordan does what she does for the city. So, no, satisfied with the research. Larissa and I have worked with Jordan on this a number of times, as well as her work with the IS department. So I'm very comfortable with the recommendation that she's making here this evening. And if you want to hold upon that until the workshop on Tuesday and/or act on that this evening, stipulating that once you've seen that and we go through the workshop next Tuesday, you're still satisfied, then we move forward at that point in time. That would be my recommendation for this evening.
Thank you, Steve. Did you say, Jordan, that New Bern, North Carolina, was that the name?
Yes.
Yeah, because I just went on, and it sure is a whole lot better than what we've got now. I'm just searching for stuff and it's working really, really well, so.
And if you look up, I really liked St. Petersburg, Florida, and so they are in our similar price as well. And Des Moines, Iowa.
Oh, okay.
Jordan, is St. Pete, Florida, the same thing?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I thought their website, that's the one I remembered, and I liked it.
Yeah, I'm satisfied with acting on, because I looked at this list, and the only thing missing for me was the ability to go and look at some of these sites, because you can't really tell who does them.
Right.
So if I had had that ahead of time, but just being able to do that right now, I'm totally satisfied with the way these sites look, and they don't look cookie cutter. I like the fact that it's not templated. I don't want that ever again. So, oh, yeah.
And that's what I was thinking about the templated site as well, is that if we have the ability to go fully custom, we should kind of do it now. And we do, there is a chance for a free redesign in four years, so if we don't like our site in four years, we can switch it up, but I think it's time to move on for something a little newer, a little fresher, and a little cleaner.
Yeah, I'm totally satisfied and willing to go through the vote this evening so that at our workshop next week, we can do that, knowing that this is the company that we're going to work with, and share our thoughts and feelings as part of the whole process of what the workshop is going to be about next week. Anybody else share those feelings, or do you feel like you need to wait to vote on awarding this contract? Because if you're not, if you don't want to wait, then make a motion, and I'll look for a motion in a second.
I have no problem making a motion to approve that we sign a contract for the revision of the website. I don't know if I may.
So order to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Revise LLC for redesign and upgrade of the City of Sanford website. Is that a motion, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I have no problem making that motion.
Second.
All right, and a second by Counselor Stackpole. So we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Being none, I will call a roll. Counselor Brink?
Yes.
Counselor Martel?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also, yes, that is unanimous of all present.
I would, I got to tell you, I would still make the phone calls in case there's a red flag.
Oh, yeah. Before you sign the contract, just do some background. I mean, it looks good. Let's make sure that they're doing everything they say.
Definitely.
They're going to do. Okay, oh, let's see, are we done? Council member comments? Counselor Brink?
No comments.
Counselor Martel?
Nothing additional for tonight, thank you.
Counselor Hanselman?
Thank you.
Counselor Stackpole?
All set, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
I'm all set. I'm anxious to have a new website, I hate that website.
Oh, I know, I am so excited about that. I have no comments. I'll go to future agenda items. Counselor Brink?
Not at this time, thank you.
Counselor Martel?
Nothing for tonight, thank you.
Counselor Hanselman?
Thank you.
Counselor Stackpole?
All set, thanks.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
I'm all set.
Okay, I have a couple of things, Steve, that I would like the subcommittee to take up. I would really like to have a report on our snow removal priorities, particularly keeping in mind downtown. And I'd also like an update on how our new sidewalk piles are performing. And I would also like to move that discussion of Grammar Road and Grammar Street to public safety. Okay? And that's all I think I have, unless I forgot something, which it'll just have to wait. And just as a reminder, we have a workshop next Tuesday. It will be on Zoom to discuss communications in the City of Sanford. Six o'clock next Tuesday. Everybody got that?
Yes.
All right, I will declare us adjourned. Thank you all.
Good night.
Thank you, have a great night.
Good night.